Good morning, all. Today is June 3rd, 2025. Lee County Board of County Commissioners meeting. We convene. If we could have Pastor McLaughlin come on up and do our invocation. If we could all rise, and then we'll do the pledge.
Well, I thank you for the opportunity that we have to pray for our leaders, just as the Apostle Paul encouraged us to do in First Timothy. Well, I just pray for each one of these men, Lord, as they lead this county. They make decisions that affect every one of us. I pray that you'll give to them wisdom beyond their knowledge. I pray that they will do what's best for everybody involved. Lord, I pray a blessing upon each one of them. Lord, I ask that you will just watch over them, watch over their families. I know many are dealing with family issues, just like the rest of us are. Lord, I pray for each one of them, Lord, that you will take and that you will have your hand on them. Lord, I pray for each person that's in this room, Lord. You know us intimately. You care about us. Lord, I pray that you will just have your hand upon us and direct our lives. Lord, I pray that everything that is said and done today will bring glory to your name. Lord, I think of Psalm 1914. It says, "Let the words of my mouth and the meditations of my heart be acceptable in your sight, O Lord." And I pray that everything that is said and done here today will be honorable. Lord, I know that there are many of us that have differing opinions on various issues. Lord, help us to always walk with understanding of the other position. Lord, I pray a blessing upon each one of them, each person here, Lord. If they do not have a relationship with you, Lord Jesus, I pray that they will have an encounter with the living God. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Turn to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Before we enter into the ceremonial affairs, I just would like to make a few comments. I appreciate all the support the community has given me. Appreciate my commissioners being there in probably the most challenging thing I've ever done in my life. Losing a family member is tough, especially when you have one that's battling cancer and certainly going to go to God in a couple of days. So it's just been a rough time. I appreciate all the support, all your attention, all your love. It was greatly felt, and my family will always be ingrained and indebted to all you for doing so. Thank you so much. On my heart. Appreciate it. With that in mind, let's go to the ceremonials. Commissioner Penegras.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could, if animal services come forward, we have Naomi in the house. A little short one in the room here. She's a little shorty this morning, so we got a little cross-bass hound, a little bit of bass hound, maybe a little bit of adoption and some.
Wow.
Pet terrier mix in there. But Karen, if you want to tell us what we got, so we had a great lot of programs, one of the summer this week, this month, with the animal services and what's going on.
Yep, there's a lot going on in June. This week is actually Pet Appreciation Week. So if you do not have a pet, please come on out and adopt one. We have plenty available. It's also Adopt a Shelter Cat Month, so being kitten season, of course, we have a lot of those available for you. It's also Pet Preparedness Month, which with hurricane season, now is time to get prepared, not only for your family, but for your pets as well. You can go on our website, which is lee lost pets dot com, find out every kind of tip you need to prepare for your pets ahead of the hurricane season. And it is National Microchipping Month. So right now, we have free microchipping going on, Monday through Friday. You do not need an appointment from eight to four at our location, 5600 Banner Drive. In the past two weeks, we have implanted 209 microchips, which is great. That is the best thing you can do, especially during hurricane season and ahead of the Fourth of July fireworks. Naomi will come, obviously, fully vaccinated, spayed, and microchipped. Brandon's going to show you how quick and easy it is.
Okay, Paul, if you could turn around to the audience and see too. Should find a home, do they?
I don't know who's more shy, Brandon or Naomi. But yeah, so all our pets do come microchipped with the adoption fee, so.
Well, there's nothing else we can do for that. People being self-responsible and the banner officer that sells it right there, you're brought for free microchipping is obviously a great way to identify your pets and save them. So again, thank you.
And they're waived right now, so come on out and.
Naomi's around nine months old. She's looking for a home. She's adoptable. She's been there for a week, so anybody wants to adopt Naomi, she's ready for looking for a good home.
She's ready to go. Nine months old, and she's as cute as can be.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chairman.
No problem. Good job, good job. The next, I have the privilege of reading a proclamation for Fran Myers. Fran, you here?
Yes, she is.
Wonderful. Come on up here. It's a proclamation, and I'll read the proclamation. We'll certainly take a photo together, and we'll certainly have some comments. And it's my honor to do so. Fran and I worked together for a long time, side by side. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas in 1982, Lee County citizens voted for a referendum to form a tourist organization that provided Lee County's off-season vacation assets in the United States and abroad. And whereas Fran Myers was appointed to Lee County Tourist Development in September 1985, dedicated her time, industry knowledge, and leadership to Lee County for the past 40 years. And whereas Fran Myers has served on numerous local boards, including making history as the first woman to chair Lee County Port Authority Airport's Special Management Committee. And whereas Fran Myers played a pivotal role in the development of Lynn Hall Park, Bow Witch Point Regional Park on Fort Myers Beach, as well as serving as a passionate and effective advocate for preserving public areas and recreation space on the island. And whereas Fran Myers and her late husband, Tom, own and operate the Red Coconut RV Park on Fort Myers Beach, a beloved Gulffront destination that welcomed generations of visitors for more than four decades before being destroyed by Hurricane Ian in 2022. And whereas Fran Myers was selected by the Board of County Commissioners to receive the Burton Citizen of the Year Award, becoming the 14th recipient of this distinguished honor. And whereas Fran Myers was honored by the 2024 Grand Dame's Tea for her enduring impact on the community and beyond. And whereas Fran Myers is a beacon of civic dedication, whose unwavering commitment has left the credible mark on Fort Myers Beach and Lee County since making her home in 1975. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of County Commissioners, Lee County, Florida does designate Fran Myers as a member of Lee County Tourist Development and expresses the county's gratitude, appreciation for her decades of dedicated service and outstanding contributions to its tourist industry, as well as the community as a whole." I put my signature on this, June 3rd, 2025. Congratulations, Fran.
We'd love to take a picture.
Take a picture.
Good morning. I'll count us down for a couple of photos. Three, two, one. And three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. And you want to say your words first? Please.
I will, if you want.
Well, I had written something, but I saw all the folks here today and realized we have a really, really long meeting. I flew into Page Field about 50 years ago, and I actually thought I was coming on vacation because we came with, I think, 10 suitcases, three sets of golf clubs and tennis rackets. And I moved to Fort Myers Beach, but what I didn't realize is I was really moving to the Wild West. And I can't tell you. I moved into Times Square. We bought a building in Times Square. Oh, yeah, I came with $20,000. That was our savings. And we bought a building in Times Square, and I moved in there with three kids and a husband into a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment. And I saw everything in Times Square, and I honestly wondered what I had done because, well, I was maybe 300 feet from when Lynn Hall was killed that night. And in my front yard, which was Times Square, I can't tell you how many drunk people there were and how many shrimpers with white boots on, and I just had no idea where I moved. So anyhow, things went very well, and I became a county advocate for changing things on Fort Myers Beach. And I think we did really, really well. I'll tell you who helped me a lot was Bill Hammond. Without Bill Hammond, I probably couldn't have gotten through what we all went through out there with Lynn Hall Park and Bow Witch and just the Times Square. When we closed Times Square, I think I was chairman then of the chamber. And when we closed Times Square, I can remember walking through Times Square, and I can remember hearing the word that starts with a B over and over and over. There she is, the Bee Woman. And so, but as you know, it worked out, and we still have our problems since the hurricane, that's for sure. But then I was asked to go on the Tourist Development Council. Bud Nacero called me, and I think it had been started maybe two years before I went on, and we met in a little building downtown here somewhere, and we had two six-foot tables and some straight chairs. And from there, you've seen where the Tourist Development Council has gone. And I just want to tell you all that it's been my pleasure. And, but I want to tell you all that, you know, I've been active in the state and go to all the governors' conferences, and I can tell you that Lee County's Tourist Development Council is probably the leanest, but the best, in the whole state of Florida. Most of you know because you've served as chairman of it. And I'm very proud, very proud to say that I was on the Tourist Council for 40 years and very proud to say I was on the airport for 32 years, I think. But I'm delighted to be here today. Kevin, you were a baby when you came on the Tourist Development Council. Bill, you've always been a baby. Cecil, I think you're the, you're just the commissioner of all the people. You really are. And our new commissioner, we can see how fast his feet are going. He's hardly ever in his office, and he's out and about everywhere. And Mike, I remember watching you play baseball. So, and I've told commissioners, I just want to tell you, I just want to tell you who I served under for all these years. Remember Melvin Morgan?
Yeah.
Mary Ann Wallace? We called her Madam No. Andy Coy, Vicky Lopez, Tommy, who was that? Oh, Tammy Hall. Ray Judah was the person that supported me for many, many years, and he really taught me to be more of an environmentalist, and I taught him to be more of a businessperson. He was so tree hugger when he came on. I mean, when you get older, you can say these kind of things, it doesn't matter. You know? So, but I'll never forget, he, we roasted him, and we brought, you know, he hated the, what do I want to call them?
Motorcycles.
Yeah, the, what do you call them? The things that go real fast.
Motorcycle?
Yeah. No, not a motorcycle, the water. The jet skis, the jet skis, yeah. And, and he hated those, and he wanted to do away with them in Lee County. And I said, "Ray, I don't really think you can do that, you know? You're going to really hurt tourism." And so, we finally talked him into not doing it. But when we roasted him, we brought him in the back door with, with a jet ski that was on wheels, and we made him ride it in the door. And actually, in those days, we had so much fun. We really had fun. With Bill Fussell, he thought he was Buddy Holly, you know? And we'd go to the movies with him, and he would dress like Elvis Presley. And we just had so much fun. And Doug St. Cerny, John Albion, John Manning, Mike Rader, Wade Scaife, Roland Roberts, Roland Eastwood, Charles Bigelow, Don Swisher, Ernie Avo, Brian Bigelow, and of course, we all remember Porter Goss. But those were really, really fun days. When I say we had fun, we really did have fun. So, thank you all. Oh, I know who I forgot. All these guys over here, so familiar. I forgot Tamra. Without Tamra at the head of the TDC, I don't know what would happen. I think I, where is she? She's there, there she is, and her staff, all her staff back there. And she's served for a long time. I think I served under six directors, and she above all, she's got the touch. So, thank you very much for having me here today. The emeritus that you put on the award means a lot to me, and so I thank you all very much. You're all great commissioners.
What a career. Congratulations.
Thanks again. Fran, great job. And yeah, I was really young when I got here, but I'm really old now, so I get that, what happens in life. Next award is the One Org Award from Human Resources.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm Angela Pruitt from Human Resources, and I have the honor today of, on behalf of the county manager and the senior team of recognizing our One Org recipients from 2024. One Org is more than just a program. It's a philosophy that reminds us that we are one organization united in our mission to serve the community. It's about working together across departments, building each other up, and recognizing that our collective success depends on how well we collaborate and support one another. In 2024, we had hundreds of One Org nominations, each one highlighting individuals who went above and beyond to demonstrate what it truly means to work in a one organization. A committee carefully reviewed these nominations and selected a group of individuals who embody the spirit of One Org through their actions, their teamwork, and their commitment. So today, we're proud to recognize these individuals. For each recipient, we're going to show you a short video that tells their story. They will come up and get their certificate. They'll wait off to the side so that we can take a group photo at the end. We're going to begin with our first honoree. Please join me in watching the video for Lieutenant Jason Gaff.
I nominated Lieutenant Gaff, Jason, for this award because he seized an opportunity that was fleeting.
During Hurricane Helene, I was assigned to the West District or our District Four during the storm. And during storms, you know, we take the all-hands-on-deck approach. That night turned into a water rescue in Indian Creek Mobile Home Park.
He responded with our local fire departments out to a mobile home community that was flooding. We had no equipment that could reach them to get them out of harm's way. Lieutenant Gaff was able to see an opportunity with a civilian with a high clearance truck and jump out, wave them down, ask for their assistance. There was no other way. Not simply give them a direction, but to go with them and make that happen. It was truly extraordinary.
Even though I work for the Department of Public Safety, it's important to understand that our county as a whole is one team. Even though there's multiple departments throughout the county, we all come together to get the mission done, and whatever that is.
We've talked about an isolated incident today. The fact of the matter is, he is that way every day. Our One Org initiative is inclusive, working with all of our departments. He's the embodiment of that, working with anyone to be better. There does need to be more Jason Gaffs in the world. We would all be better off.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Jason Gaff. Now, please join me in watching a video for Abby Soto.
I nominated Abby for the One Org Award because when I see her out there helping out, she's always smiling, and she's willing to help out, and I think that's what embodies the One Org.
Southwest Florida Ag Expo. So that was a big event, and one volunteers were asked for. I definitely signed up. I like to help wherever I can. I think it's the unity, seeing people from different departments, maybe their backgrounds are different, and just seeing the similarity. We have to be united in some way, so the more we participate, the more we get to know different people.
It was Sunday, and we wanted to just go for the last day before they closed it out. From far away, we saw Abby, and she's like, "Jesse, hi." But before she even saw me, I saw her, and she was already helping people out after the day went by. It was nighttime, time to close. We came out, and Abby was still out there, and she was still smiling, and she was still helping people. And I'm like, "Oh, my goodness, Abby's going strong at it."
People think of customer service for outward people coming in, or residents coming in, but I think everybody in this agency, it doesn't matter where you are, you provide customer service. I think even internal customer service is more important because we see each other on a day-to-day basis. So customer service is everything.
When you're around with someone like Abby, it just makes you feel encouraged to help out because she's friendly and brings that out of you. So I enjoy when I work with her. People like Abby make Lee County a better place to live and work.
Congratulations to Abby. Next up, please join me in watching the video for Jennifer Kavanaugh.
I decided to nominate Jennifer because of the compassion that she shows every day. I mean, she's just always there whenever you need anything.
I just really like to be able to find an answer, you know, find a solution, be able to help out anyone that I can. I really enjoy helping people and letting them learn something that maybe they've never thought that they wanted to learn or could learn.
The customer was very inconsolable. He wanted his stuff, and he wanted it now, and he wasn't understanding that there's a process to go through. So I went to Jennifer's desk, and I was like, "Could you please come help me with him?" She goes, "Absolutely." She got up off her desk, went to the window, she explained to the customer, explained to him what he needed. He was happy when he left, and I guess he got his permit within two or three days because he submitted what they were looking for. She took the time, showed me and explained to me what to look for on the screen to help the customers, and it was pretty amazing. Didn't even take five minutes of her time, but she didn't have to do it.
What I would want citizens to know about DCD is that we are there for them. We are there to help them and to direct them and to guide them and get them to where they need to be. The people that I get to go see every day at work, they really motivate me to want to help them and to be supportive of them.
Our building, DCD, is truly One Org. She's a permitting supervisor. I'm in records. You can go to anybody on any level, and they're more than willing to help.
It's really a great place to work. I was born and raised here, and so to be able to give back to the community is just, it's really, it's really great.
And last, but certainly not least, please join me in watching the video for Benicia Toylooy.
Benicia herself did not share this with me. I found out through one of the police officers at the airport. One day last summer, a woman arrived at the airport. She had come in from St. Louis, Missouri. The man who was supposed to pick her up did not exist and had practically no money on her, just $100. And she was hearing impaired. So Benicia, being the innovative person that she is, found one of our volunteers who knows American Sign Language, but who wasn't at the airport at the time. So they FaceTimed for over two hours and trying to get the whole story of what had happened, and then finding a solution of how the woman could possibly get back home because that's what she really wanted to do. She just wanted to go home.
We were able to get her back on a Greyhound bus safely to her house. I walked her over to the taxi seat and realizing that she did not have that funds, so I went ahead and paid for it myself, just to make sure that I knew that she was safe. Customer service is the bread and butter of what we do. We want to make sure that everybody has that help because sometimes it just takes a personal action to make, you know, that moment mean something to someone.
This is not really an isolated incident. Over the four years that she's now been in visitor services, she has helped so many people. It's just fantastic.
I truly appreciate the fact that Lee County has a one-organization philosophy where all different departments can come together for the greater good, to make sure that a resident as well as a visitor feels that they're a part of the community.
Let's congratulate all of our winners today. We're just going to finish up by taking a group photo.
Good morning. I'll count us down for appeal. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. And one more. Three, two. Perfect. Thank you.
Good stuff. Next, I'll go over the recap. On the recap, C35 is going to be deferred to June 17th.
I'll move to defer that item to June 17th, Mr. Chair.
Second. I have a motion, a second on the floor. Any public comment? I have a motion, a second on the floor. Any public comment? Seen none, I'll close public comment. Back up to the deus. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. With that in mind, I'll go to the consent agenda. Commissioner Hammond, any items you'd like to pull?
I have no items to pull, Mr. Chair.
No items.
I just have one, number 17, please.
Okay, number 17. Can I entertain a motion or move forward with the balance of the consent agenda?
Move the balance.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Seen none, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back up to the deus. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go back to item number 17. David, the floor's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in today's world, we always hear what people don't like, but I always think it's important to point out good jobs when they're things that are well done as well. And I just, I pulled this item simply to highlight the efforts of Robert Cody and Ehab Burgess on this change order reconciliation with the EOC, which was a tremendous event this week, by the way. The, when I went through the review of this item and the way they went through the thoughtful expenses to make sure that the customer-driven change orders of things that we wanted to add and pay for, we did and got a good deal on those. And the things that we were trying to get, they were being billed to us that weren't our responsibility from a construction side or a design side, we didn't pay for those. And I think that's an excellent job for budgeting and strategy that I just wanted to highlight. I left that meeting feeling very positive about the attention to detail that they're spending in that department. And I know I didn't pull these other two items, but in that spirit, item 19 and 21 were two park projects for Boca Grande and Bochilia. And they were able to, with Ehab's guidance on here, move almost a million dollars of cost savings of a job that came in under budget for one of the parks we just approved, right? And move the money over to Lavender Landing and Bochilia to fund another project with the savings for a job that came in under cost. So I just wanted to compliment Robert Cody and Ehab Burgess and their team for their excellent work on those items. So.
Great.
Thank you.
Would you like to move the item?
I'll, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Commissioner Hammond seconded it. We have a motion, a second on the floor. Any public comment? Seen none, let's bring it back up to the deus. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. That'll conclude the consent agenda. We'll now move on to the administrative agenda. County manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to execute CDB GDR funding documents for Strayhorn Place Affordable Housing Project. I'd like to ask Mr. Sawyer to present the item.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is the first of two requests for CDB GDR funding for new multifamily affordable housing apartment development. Both are in the city of Fort Myers. This one known as Strayhorn Place is being developed by a nonprofit affiliate of the Housing Authority. They propose to construct 80 units of senior living affordable units. We would, we, the county, would provide $17.7 million and the affordability period for these, these units is 99 years. If you have any questions, I know Housing Authority representatives aren't here.
Any questions from any Commissioners?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Penegras, a second by Commissioner Greenwell. Any public comment? Seen none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the deus. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. County manager, item 42.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to execute CDB GDR funding documents for St. Peter Claver Housing Phase Two, Affordable Housing. I'd like to ask Mr. Sawyer to present the item.
Thank you. This is for 72 units, affordable units in the city of Fort Myers. There is a mix of affordability levels which are specified in the agenda item. This project will be built by National Development of America, sponsored by the Diocese of Venice. The county would provide $17.2 million of CDB GDR funding, which would be repaid by the development over time so that we can undertake additional projects in the future.
Any questions?
I'll move approval, Chair.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Ruine. Any public comment? Seen none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the deus. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number 43.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a ward of contract construction to construct Able Canal Pathway. I'd like to ask Mr. Burgess to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ehab Burgess, Construction and Management. This item is to approve a contract with maintenance in the amount of $10.1 million to build the shared path along Able Canal to the north side of the canal in the Lampstead right-of-way. The path will be 12 feet wide, six miles long. We can also build some other amenities to, for that linear part. That will include three bike repair stations, 17 benches, three dog waste stations, three shade structures, and three bike racks. The path starts here at Horns Marsh Reserve and ends here at Joe Boulevard. The job will take about 22 months and it's funded by three different kinds of fund. The grant from FDOT and Regional Park and Impact Fee and Park Impact Fees. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Ehab, for bringing this forward. This is something we've been working on many, many years. So thank you, all the staff. It's obviously a great enhancement for transportation in East Lee County. It shows Lee County's continued commitment to East Lee County and Lehigh. This is going to help the schoolchildren in the area there and the people, pedestrians getting out of the roadway. So this is going to be a great project in Lehigh. So thank you.
I'll make a motion to Ehab. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Greenwell, a second by Commissioner Hammond. Any public comments? Seen none? Oh, sorry, Derek, you did have a card. I apologize. Moved too fast. Come on up. Thanks, Derek.
Derek, call it for the record. I just want to say thank you for this. I think it's a great addition to Lehigh. I know it's been in the works for many years. It's just great to see it, you know, finally hopefully come into fruition here and start construction soon. I think you said 22 months for construction. With that, potentially I'd like to, we've been doing some 5K events and things like that on Lehigh. Potentially would like to entertain, do, work with staff to maybe do a 5K grand opening ceremony with the ribbon cutting of this when it's complete. Maybe even in the future, long-term, a marathon of some kind. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the deus. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Seen none? Anyone object? Seen none, motion carries unanimously. Let's move on to our first public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder that your public hearing will be set for 5:05 PM this evening. So at the end of this session, please just recess and not adjourn.
I will recess at the end of this session and reconvene at 5:05. Thank you for the guidance. I appreciate it very much. Any walk-ons or carryovers? Having none, let's go to Commissioner Items. Commissioner Hammond, any Commissioner Items?
I have none today, Mr. Chairman.
No items.
I don't either. Let's go to Commissioner Appointments. Commissioner Hammond.
None today, Chairman.
I have a few. Billy Aldrich, DC of the St. Carlos Park Improvement District, Harvey Colkin of the St. Carlos Park Improvement District, and reappointment with Kathy Rowland to St. Carlos Park Improvement District.
I second that. I have a motion, a second. Any public comments? Seen none, we'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the deus. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. David?
I have one appointment and I want to thank Fran Myers again. That was, it was nice to hear about the fun, good old days and thank her for all she did. And I have a new appointment for that position and I'm proud to announce that Brian Kramer, who has been a non-mating member of the TDC for the last nine years, I'm going to make him the appointment for that position today. So.
Second.
I have a motion, a second on the floor. Any public comments? Seen none, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back up to the deus. Any other discussion? Seen none, I'll close public, I'll close that discussion. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I have none.
None from Commissioner Greenwell. I have three. Parks and Rec Services, I have John Botner and Lisa Benton for reappointments. On Cherry Blue, I'm sorry, Blueberry Improvement, I have Nathan Christensen.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any public comment? Seen none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the deus. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. County manager, items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item, Animal Services Update. I'd like to ask Mr. Moore to present.
Thank you, Mr. Harner. Good morning, Commissioners. At the last meeting on May 20th, I shared details of a recent and unfortunate incident involving a stray cat that was humanely euthanized because we were unable to identify the owner. This incident prompted us to look at our protocols and procedures to prevent such occurrences from happening in the future. As it currently stands, Lee County Ordinance 14-22 establishes a zero-day holding period for small animals, and that includes cats that lack any form of identification, including microchips or licenses. Following our internal reviews, staff have implemented an immediate procedural change. A one-day hold will now be observed for unidentified stray cats. This additional time is intended to improve opportunities for unification with owners whenever possible. While historical intake data from 2000 to 2024 shows that the percentage of stray cats reclaimed by owners has never exceeded 1.69%, we believe this procedural update allows our staff a better window to assess each animal's health, share photos publicly and on lealospets.com, and collaborate with partner shelters to locate potential owners. To make this change permanent, an agenda item will be filed for public hearing to amend Lee County Ordinance 14-22, Section 3, Subsection 25. That effectively changes the hold period from zero to one day for unidentified cats. Beyond this particular amendment to the ordinance, the most reliable safeguard for reuniting lost pets with their owners remains proper identification, whether through a collar with contact information or a registered microchip. In fact, Section 3, Subsection 21 of that same ordinance requires all dogs, cats, and ferrets to wear identification displaying the owner's name and a current phone number at all times. This can be achieved through a physical tag on a collar or a registered microchip. Lee County Animal Services offers low-cost microchipping and frequently provides free microchipping events, as you heard this morning, at events across the county. In fact, since the media first reported on this recent incident, we've seen a significant increase in pet owners coming to Animal Services seeking a microchip for their animals. This is a trend that we strongly encourage and we certainly do applaud. Our team remains fully committed to continuous improvement. However, we cannot do this alone. We need the community's support. Licensing, microchipping, and properly identifying your pets and animals are the best way to ensure they return home and we prevent tragic outcomes. I'll leave you with this. Together, we can prevent, prevent these things from happening and protect the animals in our care in the future with the help of the community with events such as microchipping, identification collars, and other things that identify animals when they come into the shelter. I'm open to any questions you might have on these procedural changes and our next steps.
Any questions?
I have a question on timeline. I know it'll be coming back to us later. Do we have a timeline yet for that?
Well, we're hoping to bring it back next meeting. As I mentioned, we already started this procedure in-house, so we're already holding animals that come into the shelter for 24 hours before we're making any determination on whether we euthanize them or not.
And then it'll be another public hearing probably in August and through the July break.
Yeah, we're hoping to bring it to the next meeting. It will direct to public hearing in August. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to, I do want to say thank you for taking a look at your procedures and your processes and coming up with recommendations and actually taking action already. The one-day hold, I think, is absolutely a step in the right direction and a good start. I love everything that you've outlined so far. And I think it's just really important to be able to show the public that, you know, we're always looking for ways that we can do better to serve them. Our job is to serve the community and, you know, when we have opportunities to reflect on the job that we do and how we can do better and respond to that and do it publicly, I think that's always the right way to handle things. And so I appreciate that you guys have brought forward these very thoughtful suggestions.
I'll add a few comments. Appreciate both Commissioners doing so. You know, Mark, I look forward to, appreciate the briefing yesterday and getting up to speed is important. I look forward to, and the ordinance that comes to us, I look forward to making sure we continue to make these improvements. There's an awful lot of things that we do well here. There's always room for improvement. As I would quote something from my, my brother Matt, "Let's not be good, let's be great." So let's make sure we get this as well as we can for the citizens of Lee County. So thank you so much. Any other comments?
No, sir.
Thank you for the update, County Manager. Look forward to that. Any other items?
We do not, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Huh?
We do not, thank you, Mr. Chair.
County attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to announce that given the recent rains, the county-wide drought index has dropped below the standard that necessitates a burn ban. As you recall, that burn ban would expire by its own terms this Thursday. If you would like to make that immediate impact, we would require a board motion and an affirmative vote to do so, and then it will be effective at today.
I'll gladly move the item that we discontinued the burn ban.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ruine, a second by Commissioner Malakor. Any public comment? Seen none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the deus. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, County Manager.
Thank you.
County attorney, sorry. Public presentation by citizens. My first card is Willie Joe Shop Miller. Willie Joe, you here?
I don't see him.
I don't see him. Jeanne Jane.
Good morning. Well, I was going to speak about the stray hold for cats and I see that something is already being done about it. I would like to see at least 48 hours, you know, compromise between zero and three, maybe 48 hours if that would be possible. Kevin will be remembered as the cat who saved lives. I'll make sure of it. That's a selfless quote by Angela Tardif. We've been pleading for a stray hold for cats without identification for a very long time and we're very happy to hear that at least one day is better than zero. It's very difficult to keep a cat from going outside if the cat wants to. Collars on cats are known to sometimes cause injury or death. The solution, of course, is microchipping all cats, including feral TNRs, so they can be returned to their home. Many residents have been unaware that their cat could be euthanized if it's not microchipped or had identification. I would like to see maybe a public service announcement like that, you know, telling the people that their cat can be euthanized even now within one day. Now until July 3rd, microchipping is free at the shelter, Monday to Friday, 8 to 4, and no appointment is necessary. More pets go missing on the 4th of July than any other day of the year. One of the six mission statements of Lee County Domestic Animal Services in 2014 read, quote, "Reducing pet overpopulation through non-lethal humane methods," unquote. Did you know that sentence is no longer included in the mission statement? It is wonderful that all 120 slots for the BISL program for low-cost spay neuter of own cats were filled. However, the fact that it happened so quickly in just one day shows how great the need is in Lee County. We are hoping for more similar events on a regular basis in the, at the shelter in the future. The spay neuter voucher program for the sterilization of own cats is underway. Lee County residents can have up to three of their indoor or indoor-outdoor cats sterilized, microchipped, and vaccinated. As of May 1st, 256 cats had been sterilized through the program. The voucher program is a step in the right direction in overcoming the extreme overpopulation of cats. However, we want to remind you that we will continue to strive for the revision of Ordinance 14-22. It is in your hands. It is over 10 years since the ordinance was passed. Adoption and fostering are not enough. It is mandatory that a robust free or low-cost spay neuter program for dogs and all cats must be put in place. Also, controls are needed for backyard breeders, that is, breeders of domestic animals that are not of a nationally recognized dog or cat club. Rules could include licenses and mandatory reporting. Please seriously consider a revision to Ordinance 14-22. Thank you to everyone in the community and especially the rescue partners for stepping up and trying their best to save the lives of dogs and cats of Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Tardif?
Good morning. My name is Angela. I'm here again because today, because of my cat Kevin, who was euthanized within two hours of arriving at Lee County Domestic Animal Services. Since speaking out, the county has now updated its policy. Now to include a no-hold, instead of a no-hold, there will be the one-day stray hold for cats without Since speaking out, the county has now updated its policy now to include a no-hold, instead of a no-hold, there will be the one-day stray hold for cats without identification. But let me be very clear, that still will not have saved Kevin. Two hours, that's all he was given. There was no photo posted, no public notice, and when I called the shelter, I was told he was not there. I called the next morning and still was told he was not there. It was only when I actually showed up in person I found out he was euthanized. So while this policy may sound like a progress or sound like progress, what it really says is it's okay to kill someone's pet, you just now have to wait 24 hours. That's not a solution, it's damage control. And I want the public to know exactly how we got here. Because when I first came forward, I was told that only 1% of unchipped cats are reclaimed. But how can we find out where our pets are if they're killed before we're even told where they are? Let's stop pretending that number reflects community failure. That number reflects systemic design. When you kill quickly, posting nothing and deny animals are even there when our owners call, of course, the rate stays low. That's not coincidence, it's a pattern. So while this one-day hold may look like improvement on paper, it does nothing to address the real failures inside that building. No consistent photo documentation, no transparency in intake or euthanasia decisions, and no tracking of how many animals are killed before even being listed, and no accountability until the public starts asking questions. This is not just about Kevin anymore, this is about every pet in the system that has been failed and every family who has never gotten a chance to say goodbye. So I'm going to keep speaking and keep asking, I'm going to keep exposing what happens behind those closed doors because we do not need a new policy for PR. We need a system that gives our pets a real chance to come home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kaylee Theroux?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Theroux, and I'm newly appointed president of Fortunate Ferals. Founded in 2012 by the late Glenda Sparroft, and the only organization in Lee County solely dedicated to trap neuter and return. Our mission is simple. It's to provide TNR assistance, education, and guidance to the caretakers of feral and community cats right here in Lee County. TNR is the only humane and effective solution to cat overpopulation, and it is recognized worldwide. And here in Lee County, we're looking at an estimated 250,000 cats just running around. Since our founding, we've helped TNR more than 5,000 cats across the county, excuse me, across the region. Cats that are now fixed, vaccinated, and being monitored by the very community members who reached out for help. Still, in 2024, 1,442 cats were euthanized in Animal Services. And we know this isn't due to a lack of compassion. We understand it's the result of capacity limits, difficult decisions, and the lack of public education. We're not here to criticize, we're here to offer some help. In the past, Fortunate Ferals has partnered with Gulf Coast Humane Society and Lee County Domestic Animal Services to host TNR workshops and distribute free spay, excuse me, free spay or neuter vouchers. Even before my time, our founder Glenda worked directly with LCDAS. And those efforts worked, and we love that opportunity to bring that back again. We'd also like to invite the county shelter employees to attend a TNR workshop, so together we're all providing the public with the same clear, accurate information. Even just that shared understanding could go a long way for our community. We recognize that the two biggest barriers are, or excuse me, for TNR support are funding and veterinary access. And that's why I'm asking you here today respectfully and directly. What would it take? What is the cost that would make this happen again? We, excuse me, if we knew the number, we'd be able to help raise it through partnerships, through grants, community. I also want to gently address the reoccurring intake of ear-tipped cats at the shelter. These cats have already been fixed, they've been vaccinated, and yet they're still being brought in, most of the time euthanized. It's not efficient, and it's not humane. Most community cats are not adoptable, they're unsocialized and terrified in confinement. It doesn't lead to an adoption, it leads to a euthanasia, simply because there's no other plan. And today, I want to help build that plan. That includes more public education, how to live for, care for, and deter community cats if that's what they choose. There's a gap here, and Fortunate Ferals would like to help close it. We've been doing this work across southwest Florida for over a decade, and we know what works here. We're not asking the county to carry this alone, we're asking for a seat at the table so we can help. Thank you for your time and for considering partnership that moves us all forward together.
Thank you for your comments. Lori Hepner?
Lori Hepner with myself. At, we've started a petition at change.org. Right now, we have 11, 1,149 signatures to demand Lee County become a no-kill shelter. That number will continue to grow as more people learn and more people are outraged. Priscilla was euthanized. She was stuck in the back room, couldn't get out on the adoption floor, and she was a cattle dog. Also, Kevin was euthanized. And did you know that chips move? Okay, the chip, it's been noted all over, you know, and they've been found all over. And so something needs to account for this. In addition to that, I'd like to revisit our past meetings, and I've asked for accountability on Pablo Adorno and his staff. And I haven't had any accountability, and I'd like something in writing. And I am very frustrated. I have, I'm going, I have contacted Byron Donalds, I've contacted Brooke Scott, I have contacted Ron DeSantis, and any other public official that will help in this respect. Lee County has one of the highest euthanasia rates in all Florida, and it's just totally unacceptable. The building needs, hasn't been improved since the 90s, and so it is in desperate need of a larger building and more buildings so that animals can live comfortably and not die. Okay, thank you very much, and you have a good day.
Thank you.
Linda Sheldon?
Good morning, gentlemen. So I'm here, actually, I want to discuss one little issue that was brought to a lot of people's attention. Back in December, on December 19th in 2023, with a well-coordinated effort from the Lee County Sheriff and Lee County Domestic, 34 puppies were seized in the parking lot of Petland on College Parkway. They were seized because they were in horrific conditions. They were seized and brought to the shelter. It was discovered then, they actually had fecal exams done, they were positive, 18 were positive for Giardia, confirmed by the Department of Agriculture. And finding public records and pulling public records because of a report to me that a shelter employee, Sarah Morrow, over at Lee County Domestic Animal Services said to a volunteer that a commissioner was involved in the release of those animals and to keep it quiet. So I started looking. I'm literally still angry about the comments that were made about our group that are, that happened in October about being accused of being internet trolls and being stoned and wanting these animals to sell them. So I just want to read you part of an email that I found. And this was from one of your commissioners to Pablo and Sheriff Marzino, Mark Morrow, Dave Harner. And the very tail end of this says, "I just want to make sure our tax dollars and resources are being used wisely and not as a retaliation by a disgruntled employee," and here comes the key, "or a shelter over competition during the holiday season." So now, our local shelters who are busting at the seams, trying to adopt animals out, are being accused by one of your board of wanting to do that, and by means to increase the adoption rate, is to report a pet store. Those puppies were returned, 18 of them positive, like I said, with a possible zoonotic disease spreadable to humans. No concern, they sent it back before the results were made. The big director over at the Department of Ag told me the failure happened of Lee County. They should never release those dogs without complete confirmation they were healthy, and they weren't. So my concern is, why, why is any of your department being involved in calling up and circumventing the rules and getting animals released? Against even Florida State, none of those puppies, one, excuse me, sorry, I correct myself, had valid vet certificates, but they were released. I know of one woman, and there's probably more, that bought one of those Giardia-positive puppies and spent a fortune and watched her animal suffer while he got well again. I don't understand any of it. This is kind of the reason why I think nothing's being done by you guys to help the animals, because it's all twisted and convoluted. And I really want something looked into about that. The more I dig deep, it's kind of deplorable on the end of that, using your power to possibly circumvent rules. And I would like somebody within your department or above your department to look into what happened there.
Thank you for your comments. Kathy Decoche?
Good morning. I've been here before. I volunteered at Lee County Domestic Animal Services. I was fired as a volunteer with another volunteer for bringing to light, we started meeting with some of the commissioners about the conditions at the shelter. So what I wanted to talk to you today is a couple of things that have happened since then. The adoption floor, when I was volunteering there, it was, the intake was about the same. The adoption floor would have 50, 59, 60 animals on it. December, January, February, we would have times where there were six animals on the adoption floor with kennels empty. We have right now 17 on the adoption floor. Another concern, Lee County has not been transparent in how, why they kill the animals, they are not transparent about the animals in the back, the animals that are not adoptable, the ones that are rescue-only and the ones that are not rescue-only. They will not tell us about them when we request public record, we are stonewalled. I have, which I will submit to you, very high estimates for public records. And I've contacted the state about that, they told me the software that they use, and it should not take that long to do. Lee County Domestic Animal Services has been guilty of restricting First Amendment rights. I personally have been blocked by Lee County Domestic Animal Services on their Facebook page. I've reached out, that is illegal, I've emailed Pablo Adorno about it, I've never received a response. There are several people within our group that have been blocked by a public agency. That is not allowed, that is determined by the Supreme Court, that is not allowed. It is different if there's things that are threatening, this is not that sort. This are things of disagreeing with how Lee County Domestic Animal Services will handle something. And we are blocked from the website, blocked from making comments. I can't even see the Lee County website, as many others cannot either. I mean, if I want to see it, I have to get on my husband's Facebook page. And that is just wrong. And as well as the one-day hold, it is a great effort, but Angela is right, one day would not have saved her dog. When you call there, their phone rings and rings. I have on my phone picture after picture when they post a lost animal. It says, "No image available." And if somebody cannot drive and go down to look for their animal, how do they know if their animal is there? They don't answer the phone, and when they post pictures, it literally, there's one picture on there right now that says, "No image available." They have to take a picture, they have to get it up. I mean, and then to kill an animal because somebody couldn't identify it because there's no picture is just heartbreaking. But I do, did want to bring your attention today, the First Amendment, I mean, between being fired for speaking out and being blocked from a government-funded, public Facebook page, social media page, is wrong. It's illegal and it is wrong. I would ask you to ask Lee County to fix that, please.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Cindy Fredericks?
Hello, councilmembers. Last time I was here, I got a little emotional because I'm very passionate about this. I'm not going to be crying today. Now I'm angry after what happened to Kevin, a lot of people are. My name's Cindy. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all again today. I'm here because something deeply wrong happened at the Lee County Animal Shelter. It should have never happened in any community. Kevin was euthanized two hours after arriving at the shelter, two hours. Now, what chance did his owner have of even going there looking for him? He was not a stray, he was someone's pet, and he was loved. And in just two hours, with no stray hold, which I do appreciate your 24-hour stray hold that you're working towards to give the family time to find him, Kevin was gone. Shelters are meant to provide care and protection. They are supposed to be a safe place for lost animals, not a place where someone's pet's put down immediately after arrival. I'd be curious to know what each one of you think about that. I know you can't say anything, but just curious what you guys think about that, because this is what we've been telling you for almost a year. Across the country, the standard is clear, a minimum 72-hour stray hold before any animal without ID is considered for euthanasia. The policy exists to prevent exactly what happened to Kevin. So I'm asking today, again, I appreciate your 24-hour stray hold, I'm asking for 72-hour stray hold on cats. I'm mostly speaking about cats today. That will give them a chance for families to find their pet. And let me be perfectly clear, this was, this wasn't a simple oversight, it was a complete failure of compassion and procedure. I'm asking this council to act, not just acknowledge what happened, but to make sure it never happens again. I respectfully request, if you want to take this down, a full investigation into the circumstances surrounding Kevin's death, including who made that decision, what policies were or weren't followed, and whether this has happened before. I'm skipping some of this. Kevin mattered, and his life mattered, and his family deserved the better, and so do the people of Lee County who trust their pets will be safe. Please remember, you are elected officials. You were elected because the people believed in each of you, that you would do a good job and act in the best interest of this community. When something like this happens, and there's no responsibility, no change, the trust is broken. We've came here month after month raising these concerns, asking for answers, waiting for change, and we're met with silence and we're met with nothing ever being done.
Your time's up.
And I have been touched.
Thank you for your comments.
I understand.
Thank you. Derek Felder?
You got a workshop this afternoon, right?
Yes, sir.
My comments are going to be on the workshop. I got a comment now, can't take comments then. One item was the $15 million for the Civic Center that's on the budget coming up. I was just curious what that all is for. Obviously, we won't be answering any of this now, hopefully maybe you can answer it later. I thought all the safety improvements and things like that are completed over there, so I was just curious what we're investing $15 million in. It's been talked about that your, the board's direction was to make a bigger, better, beautiful, new Civic Center, and if that's the case, you know, sounded like, you know, potentially tearing down the structures that are there now potentially. So what are we investing $15 million in if it may be removed in the future? Couple other items were the traffic concerns for the future, likely not to change any of the tiers now, but just to, you know, advocate for some things in the future. Obviously, the LECO extension is a big thing happening right now. With that, there's going to be the need for the Sunshine North extension to State Road 80, just keeping that moving forward and getting some studies in the works and things like that, what can be happening with that. Joel Boulevard, four-laning from where it ends now on Joel up to State Road 80, especially if that, that high school and middle school get approved officially. if that, that high school and middle school get approved officially for Joel and Tuckahoe. I don't really consider moving that project up, four-lane that section of roadway. And lastly, Homestead Road from where it ends at Sun, Sunrise, I think, down to Milwaukee. Obviously, there's six new housing developments in that area. You guys got the new, you know, Lee County Government Facility that's down there on Milwaukee at Homestead. There's thousands of homes that are being put into that area, so just advocating to move that section of roadway forward and up from Tier Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Powell.
Good morning. I have a handout, if that's acceptable. These little notations.
Hand it to the clerk, please.
So my name is Melinda Powell. I'm here on behalf of Jug Creek, and I wanted to thank you guys for taking, giving us the opportunity to speak to you on our behalf. I am here to request an extension of a deadline for a violation. I will presenting the background for the situation, kind of just giving you guys a picture of what's going on. And then we also have a couple of speakers who would like to testify. So back in about August of 2023, we purchased Jug Creek LLC in Marina. We, it is a historically industrial-zoned commercial fish house. It was in a state of disarray through hurricane damage from Hurricane Ian, and as well as years of kind of neglect and abuse. We completed various repairs, including upgrading the roofs, septic tanks, working with the Florida Department of DEP from an old previous contaminant spill, and even cleaning up the debris out of the waterways. In 2024, we were hit by both Hurricanes Helene and Milton that created devastation for the Marina and all the previous improvements that we have made. We have been working with various departments since then, including the Department of Agriculture, DEP, Business of Professional Regulations, and even the FWC, which we were recently awarded a rebuilding grant that we are waiting funding on. The, the economic burden that the, the second round of damages, sorry, guys. It, the, the burden just became unbearable. At the same time, as we did these improvements, the community came in and expressed to us the need for the, the very improvements that we did and the, the relief of having this venue in place of support that they didn't previously had, which will be spoken to by one of the community members as to our ability to provide a space for the community, for the children and other various fundraising opportunities. While we worked with the state and do have licensing through a commercial commissary to produce food and serve alcohol, there was a lapse in the threshold for the number of events that has created a zoning problem. We do appreciate that, and we are committed to continuing to work with local officials and county staff, and we have begun that process and hired professional engineers and have found a path forward in order to resolve the issues that are at hand.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Your time's up. I'm sorry.
Good morning. My name is Ernestine Squires. I'm a lifelong resident of Pine Island. My family and I have been on the island for over sixty-five years, been very involved. I'm also the founder of the Bobby Holloway Memorial Fund that benefits children on the island for over twenty-eight years. And I'm also employed by Jug Creek, and I want to talk about that and how important Jug Creek is to our island, our community. I work in the Fish House Division and work closely with the fishermen, calculating their catches and monitoring, reporting to FWC and federal agencies. And our fishermen are generational. This is all they know. I feel like if the Fish House was to close, that the commercial industry on Pine Island would cease to exist. It really would. And they help our economy in so many ways, obviously providing fresh local seafood to residents, but to the restaurants, and they bring in tourism, which benefits every business on the island. And Jug Creek employs many islanders, many islanders that were, you know, we had a bridge problem, and to work off the island would be horrendous. But Jug Creek provides employment for people that are handicapped, that could not work anywhere else, that could provide living for themselves, or someone that was, without Jug Creek would have lost their home without employment, or other fishing industries that had no place after Hurricane Ian. And then we came into the fold with Jug Creek. It's very, they're, they're very important to the community and to the economy. And then we have a beautiful venue. And talking about the Bobby Holloway Fund, it's a fishing tournament that benefits children, and we're home, our home is Jug Creek now. And I chose that home for a few reasons. The Williamson family have, they've supported their island. I mean, they're the first ones to step up and help when there's a need and after the storms. They, they have, Jug Creek's been our port in the storm. And so that venue not only helps the community, it helps the children. With the help of Jug Creek, the Holloway was able to give out sixty-three thousand dollars in scholarships this year to local children, and that's a big deal. And we need that venue. We need Jug Creek to stay open. And, and not only our charity, but, I mean, they sponsor everything, and especially kid-oriented. But there's nothing that happens on the island or need that they don't see, that they don't try to fill. It's just, it's very important to us as an island, as a community, to keep Jug Creek open.
Thank you. Joe Williamson?
How you doing, gentlemen? My name is Joe Williamson, me and my brother Jimmy Williamson,爸, Jug Creek Marina. I'd like to just tell a little bit of history about the Marina and the importance it is to us personally and also our community. The reason I'm saying that, without the continuation or the extension of the ruling that the county gave us, that, you know, we're asking for today, that business does not exist. And I'll give you a little bit of the history. The earliest settler to ever move to this area, one of our earliest ever, was Torbeo Padilla. He is Canary Island Commercial Fisherman. And he moved to Key West, became a citizen in roughly about eighteen sixty-two. Eighteen seventies, he moved to Canacosta, had one son that survived, had six children, one survived. Out of that son was Torbeo Junior, and he had a son named Jesse Padilla. Jesse Padilla is the gentleman who built Jug Creek Marina. And the Williamson family was first, came to Pine Island, we had a fish market in Cairo, Georgia. Jesse Padilla hired my granddaddy, D. Lloyd Williamson. That's, you know, one of the first places we resided, you know, as a family. Jimmy and I got the opportunity by Jug Creek Marina, preserving something, you know, our people, you know, where we come from, commercial fishing, the Padillas, the Gómez's, the Coleman's, the Joiners, and a lot of big old names around here, you know, from Boca Grande all the way to the Keys and north, all come out of, you know, that place, you know, my heroes walked that place. You know, when Jimmy and I bought it, the place was in distress, you know, just years, you know, of neglect, years of, you know, the net ban, different things that played a factor in, you know, the commercial industry. When I was a kid on Pine Island growing up, there was about a dozen fish houses touching the water. I don't know how many in Lee County, Four Mile Beach and Boca Grande. Right now, the last remaining fish house touching saltwater is Jug Creek Marina. Without the food and beverage and, you know, what we're trying to, like many described, we're, we're in the process. The county ruled to give us a deadline of about a ten-day window. We have to go for an LDO. That whole process is about a six-month, you know. You know, the complaints that, you know, county brought, and I'm not formal, I might be saying things not exactly right, but we, we were given ample time except for the one, you know, maintaining the restaurant, and we would ask county commissioners, please, you know, have some consideration, give us the six months that we believe is needed. We've hired the engineering firms, and we've hired everything. Yes, sir. Thank you all for your email.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Steve Kane, cousin to Jimmy and Joe. I just wanted to conclude with the request that there is a violation 2025-695. The request that we're having with the commissioners is to extend the date from June fourth tomorrow to extending it to approximately eleven nineteen twenty twenty-five for the violation 2025-695. What that allows us to do is continue, the fish house, continue with our venue and our activities while we're working with Morris and DePue Engineering, while we're working with Mr. Ebellini, land use attorney, and working with your departments, we met with them yesterday, to walk through the process of LDO, walk through the process for a special exception for a IM-zoned area, industrial marine. With that special exception comes with the opportunity, the group, or excuse me, class two or group two type restaurant along with the consumption on premise. That takes time, obviously. With Mr. Ebellini's help, Mr. Rodriguez's help, Brian with the LDO group, who we met yesterday, with the help of Morris and DePue, we have a pathway, as many mentioned. And that's the request, is the extension of time for the violation 2025-695 from tomorrow over into November nineteenth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers that want to talk on Jug Creek? I'll close that. Any other public comments? Saying no, I'll close that. Listen, as the commissioner that has, represents that area, I got to meet Joe Williamson right after the storm. And, you know, what's amazing about Pine Island is they were a community that got together on a weekly basis, and Pam and I attended more meetings than I could ever think of. And one of the areas I went by was certainly Jug Creek before you all purchased it. It was abandoned commercial lot that actually was being utilized by drug dealers and selling all different types of things. It was just abandoned. I applaud the Williamsons, what you do for the community, always stepping up, you're involved, and the task force back that Pine put together back as soon as it happened, and you've been there since. So my understanding of the situation is you have had eight violations, which six are cleared. There's two that obviously are, you're faced up against, you're asked today as to extend, because the hearing examiner said the only people that have the authority to give you an extension is the county commissioners, and that's why you came here. They had an opportunity to converse with me and talk about it. You know, I think that the benefits to the public, the benefits to the community, the way the community has gathered together, I know there's been learning curves, I know you've adapted to every situation we've had, and I think it only seems right with the amount of money and everything you've invested in the property, given the storms, given some of the delays, that you be given an extension. So I'm going to make a motion to give an extension until November nineteenth, and I think it makes prudent sense and common sense to do this. I applaud you for everything you've done for the community, because what was amazing when I met Joe is how he stepped up and how your family stepped up to help a community, whether it was sheet rock or anything else that was necessary, and give your time and attention to an area that you continue to do so. And what Jug Creek has transformed to is something short of miraculous. So with that in mind, I will make a motion to give you the extension until November nineteenth.
I'll second that, Jim.
I have a motion to second on the floor. Any public comments about that motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might. With all due respect to the board, I would remind you that this is in a quasi-judicial proceeding. This is a matter that's already before your hearing officer. The question of board jurisdiction would arise. The respondents are represented by counsel. I would respectfully suggest that you alter your motion to make a recommendation to the hearing officer that she consider an extension, as this case is within her jurisdiction at this time.
I appreciate it. Can I have a follow-up question?
Certainly.
Okay. In my communication with the office, we were told it has to come to us to give the extension. They cannot. So if you can clarify that, I appreciate it, because we've had some communication with the hearing examiner.
The hearing examiner's office said that?
Yes, sir.
That, that, that would be a departure from past practice, and what I would suggest we will do, should your motion pass, we will seek an order from the hearing officer to that effect, to codify what she has told your office, so that we can eliminate this confusion going forward.
And, and I appreciate that. The only thing I'm trying to do is obviously, I only want to, as a commissioner, intervene when the remedy that was explained to me, it can only come to us as county commissioners. And, and I find myself in a box, having been to that community, having what, watched what's the family done to that community, helping the community, it seemed reasonable, and I'm not trying to overstep on anyone's authority, and I'm certainly new to this whole process. I'm only here five years, but I want to make sure we give them every opportunity to work with it. They've cleared up so many different issues so far, and I just think it makes prudent sense to give them that opportunity.
Absolutely understand the board's position. I would just welcome the opportunity to clarify this with the hearing officer, and we will do that without regard to the board's action today.
I'll modify.
And I apologize for causing this confusion.
Listen, I'll modify my motion to obviously include that we would like to see the extension. We'll certainly acquiesce to the hearing examiner the confusion, and the only reason why I made the motion was that she asked, or their office asked, that we have to do that, and that's why I made the motion. That make sense?
Thank you.
I have a question for the county attorney. Not really knowing the background of this case, I think, the violation, is this, I know we've got a lot of complaints for noise. Is this the violation, is this from this location, from noise at nighttime? Do we know what the violations are? I'm just trying to remember all the surroundings, because I'm not familiar with the violations.
This is a development order violation. The noise has been addressed, and certainly the sheriff's office I talked to and certainly have addressed those issues.
I have been asked before in the same type of venue before, and we've always referred it back to the hearing examiner's office. I'm just going back historically, because if we took this action in the past, I was told by the county attorney and by the hearing examiner, that would put us in jeopardy where every Tuesday, we're going to have, we're going to have a hundred cases here coming forward for the code, the hearing examiner, where it would be asked to either convene and reconcile these cases. Is that correct, county attorney? That's my concern. And I understand, I want to, I don't, I want the county to stay out of businesses and people's business, I want them to do their business and move on, but again.
Mr. Chairman?
This is why in the past, we've not ever took a code case up at public presentation of matters to reconcile and overstep the hearing examiner's process. Because that, that's the case, we're going to have probably a hundred cases here next week, from Lee High to St. Carlos Park.
And that is certainly why I respectfully requested the modification to the motion to allow us to clarify the hearing officer's comments in this regard and have her issue the appropriate order. I appreciate the board's willingness to consider that course of action, so that we are not embarking on a new pathway going forward.
My concern is if, if a commissioner was told and the applicants were told that
That's what I want to clarify.
It's obviously, obviously an issue there, because we shouldn't be told that if it's not true, if it's not legal and sufficient to carry out a case like this, if we don't have a standing in that jurisdiction, why were we told to do that and why ask these people to come down on a Tuesday morning to do this? That's my concern too, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, that, that is absolutely why I spoke up, is to clarify the process that is to be utilized, not only in this case, but in all cases going forward. And again, that's why I appreciate the modification on the board's motion, so that would afford the relief sought by the speakers, but also the opportunity for our office, along with the administration and the hearing officer, to get on the same page with how these matters are going to be handled going forward, so that we avoid this misunderstanding that puts you all in the middle.
And I appreciate all your comments. I do, I appreciate Commissioner Penney and his comments. I'm certainly a rookie compared to him. He's a veteran, I'm not.
No, I'm just saying, I don't want us to put us in.
And again, I'm not trying to do something other than, you know, I represent that district. They clearly came to me. There was consistent comments that we had to intervene, and I'm really not looking to try to open up Pandora's Box. Again, that's what the people, it indicated to me, that's what our office conferred. I don't know. I don't know any other remedy, and I agree with what Commissioner Penagras did. I'm happy to modify what you asked me to do that. I just think what I was trying to put on the record is there was hurtling efforts that were made. They seem to be going in the right direction. Unfortunately, there's bureaucracy with DEPs and Army Corps and different things. But it's a development where they're trying to obviously line up, and that's why I did intervene. I would never try to create something, open up Pandora's Box. That's not the intent. I'm just following directions as I've understood.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, and that's why we will look into this and get it clarified for you.
I'm gladly modify my motion the way you've suggested.
Thank you, sir.
You okay with the second?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I, I just want to, I don't know all the mechanics of this. I've been here five years, so I, I understand it's a complicated matter. But I just want to lend my personal support to the Williamson family and this project. I grew up out there, right next to these guys. And when you hear me say, on the trail, I used to sell my fish, and I had fun and made money catching fish in Boca Raton, that's where I sold it to. So I, I have a long history of great times growing up out there. And whatever we can use to support the Williamson family, if they say, if they shake your hand and say they're going to do it, they're going to do it. So I just want to, whatever path we can offer them, if we have to do some intervening or extension, need immediate period of this between now and November to do something about tomorrow. I appreciate whatever staff and the legal counsel advice is, but I support whatever we can do. So, thank you.
Chairman, if I may. Look, I think for the people that grew up here, part of our history, we have to try to protect. And I'm a little disappointed that this is the first time, as a commissioner, that I'm even hearing about this, that we're down to one day.
Yeah, I wish I'd known this to you.
One day, and these people are put in that position. I, I feel, I feel like this is part of history. Thank you for, Commissioner, for bringing it up. I understand we're going to open something up here, but as a family, been here a long time, done a lot of good things for Lee County, and, and I think they're being put in a box here that's unfair.
That's what I was trying to point out, just as, here we are the day before, it's just something, I didn't, nobody knew anything about this, at least I didn't, so. I want to help them, but make sure we do it the right way.
You know, it's no secret, I've been around for the last month as, as I'm dealing with some traumatic family conditions. So the Williamsons reached out to my office, we had conversations. I certainly got quickly up to speed. And trust me, I'm trying to get up to speed on so many issues. But I'd be, you know, neglecting if I didn't go and, and see what the family has done to that community. And I'm not looking to intervene in anyone's job. You all do a great job. I don't know how I'd operate without a county attorney giving me guidance like you did today, or county manager, the hearing examiner. We have unbelievable people. But when I find myself in a situation that doesn't make sense, that's where I will feel the need to. And honestly, I know the character of the people. I know their intentions are always the best, trying to do things, and that's why I did. So that's the reason for it. I appreciate everyone's comments. We have a motion to second on the floor. We've closed public comment. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Any other items before the board? Thank you all, we're adjourned.
Recede.